Pledge of allegiance and prayer. Uh, you take offense to the pleasure of the prayer, please excuse yourself from the room and then come back in when we're done. Jason, would you do some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the law. And to the people of the city. And to the citizens. I think she. It was well.
Our Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We ask that you be with us to make the decisions we need to make to this city. Ask that you be with everybody that's here tonight. Thank him for being here and protecting, keep them safe in their travels home. In our name we pray, amen. Sarah, will you do roll call, please?
Counselor Howard.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Counselor Watson.
All right.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
And Mayor Proton Sigala is absent and excused, but form is declared.
Right. Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
I don't believe so, no.
Thank you, Sarah. Approval of consent agenda, the minutes of regular meeting from April seventeenth, twenty twenty five and approval of accounts payable.
Counselor Howard.
Well. I was about ready to make that motion, yes.
I'll second it.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda from the minute of regular meeting from April seventeenth, twenty twenty five. And approval of accounts payable, any discussion? Sarah?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
I'm looking care of this to your consent agenda.
Right, we will move on to proclamations, communications and appointments. And it's awesome to see that. Uh, swearing in Sergeant Robert Pino and Anthony Chacon. By interim chief.
Good evening. Um, so first I just want to say Corporal Pino and Officer Anthony Chacon, um, have been recently promoted to sergeant. Combined they have over twenty-three years of law enforcement experience with eleven years of that being supervisor experience. Um, they're both great asset to the department and we look forward to working with them in their roles, so thank you for that.
The timer. Excuse me for interrupting you. If you guys need to get closer, we know that this is a special moment for your family, so. We don't care, just, you know.
They could have the officers close in this way or give them.
There you go.
There you go.
They don't need to see us.
Yeah, it's about you guys, not us.
Yep.
Thank you, Tyler.
You repeat that from I.
I. Robert Pino Chacon.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm under the penalty of perjury.
Or affirm under the penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
State of Colorado.
The state of Colorado.
City of Montavista Charter.
The city of Montavista Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of sergeant.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of sergeant.
To which I've, to which I have been appointed and upon which I am about to be.
To which I have been appointed upon and upon.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yes, and if you guys want to.
Yeah. Introduce your families, guys. This is my wife Sarah, this is my wife Megan, my daughter, my daughter Amari. Little child of that. Now, my son Lucas Pino back there and my son Spencer. What's up, kids? Welcome, guys. Well, my mom, my brother.
Uncle Ben.
Uncle Ben and then.
Sure, I'll go back. Lucas, you want to jump up there, you guys want to go? Let's get your dad.
What are we going to do, man? Well, all the bar, everybody. Yeah. You can't hurt him. I'm not getting hurt again. Drunken bar.
They're pretty cute little girls.
Yeah. Congratulations. Now we have the appointment of the new code enforcement officer, Cody Smith. Like Tyler Horford. Um, Cody and Valen.
I'm on the dead room.
Um, so I'd like to recognize our new code enforcement officer, Cody Smith. Cody has recently moved back, uh, back to the San Luis Valley to be close to the family and is a former Wyoming deputy. Um, he has seven years' experience in the jail and patrol. Um, so please welcome Cody to our department and we look forward to working with him. For recognition here, um, becoming a code enforcement officer is to be part of, to be a part of a team that is directly involved in helping make the city we live in a better place. Direct work with the community through education, proactive controlling, face-to-face time, provides the opportunity to build trust and confident with the citizens. Uh, we feel that Cody Smith has these qualities, so thank you, Cody.
Thank you. And trust your dad and your mom. I lost. Thanks for taking one for the team, Cody. Hey, Police Week, May eleventh through seventeen. Interlet-. Please chief, Tyler Horford.
I think Jess is going to be this one.
Oh, okay, Jess. Hey, Jess.
There. Hey, Counselor. I'm not sure how to follow up from that, that's like.
Yeah, I'm set far pretty high on this.
I know, right? So I just got to start to finish up, okay?
Yes, ma'am, go.
Alrighty, uh, proclamation, National Police Week. May eleventh, twenty twenty-five, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. To recognize National Police Week two thousand twenty-five and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Montavista Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of those dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas six hundred and nineteen new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring. Including four hundred seventy-two officers killed in two thousand twenty-one and one hundred forty-seven officers killed in previous years. Whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day. In honor of all fallen officers and their families and the US flag should be flown at half staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Montavista, city council will observe May eleventh to May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five as National Police Week in the city of Montavista and publicly salutes the service of law enforc- look. Sorry, I messed this up. Law, I was almost done. Law enforcement officers in our communities and in our community and across all nations.
Thank you. Mental health awareness.
Wait, wait, wait.
What's that?
So you guys need to take a vote to declare it.
Oh, oh.
So we need a motion.
Oh. No, Dale can just declare it.
Okay.
I declare it. There you go.
Alright.
I declare Police Week, May eleventh through seventeenth. Twenty twenty-five. Alright. Mental health awareness, who's got that one? Anita?
Both.
Please, please state your name for the record.
My name is Tylee Sowers, I'm a San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group. This proclamation declares May Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Montavista, Colorado. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health. And whereas mental illness of, illness affects almost every family in America and whereas people with mental illness recover if given the necessary services and supports in their communities. And whereas people with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families and our communities and whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year. And whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes and behaviors toward people with mental illnesses. Now therefore, I Dale Becker, Mayor, on behalf of the city of Montavista, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-five as Mental Health Month. As the mayor of Montavista, I also call upon all Montavista citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses. Reducing stigma and discrimination and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses.
Thank you. And what's that?
So declared.
So declared. Mental Health Awareness Week, May twelfth through May eighteenth. Look after your neighbors. Okay. Clerks Week, May fourth through tenth. Anita?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, May fourth through May tenth is the fiftieth annual professional municipal clerks week. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerks, a time honored and a vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerks is the oldest among public events. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerks provides the professional link between citizens and the local governing bodies and agencies of government and other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be over mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk service as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of office of the professional municipal clerks throughout participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and the annual meetings of their state, county and international professional organizations. Whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize and accomplish the offices of the professional municipal clerks. Now therefore, I Dale Becker, Mayor of Montavista, do recognize the week of May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty-five as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Anita Vance and Deputy Clerk Sarah Doyle to all and to all professional municipal clerks for their vital services as they perform and their duties of exemplary dedication to their communities as they represent.
Thank you, Anita. Uh, Professional Municipal Clerks Week. May fourth through tenth. Declared. I was throwing those heads. I declare. It is this time. Teachers Appreciation Week, May fifth through the ninth, Kids Connection Director, Anika Valdez Velasquez. Valdez.
Long enough, apparently. So proclamation, National Teacher Appreciation Week, May fifth through May ninth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas through their dedicated efforts to ensure our children learn the knowledge and skills needed to be successful in higher education, careers and life, teachers are vital, are vital in helping build the future. And whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students and performing community service. And whereas teachers play a crucial role in shaping our children into the people they will become, supporting them through their youth and teaching them lessons that will have an impact on students they will carry through life. And whereas our community recognizes and supports teachers in educating the children of this community and now therefore, you Dale Becker, Mayor of the city of Montavista, do hereby proclaim May fifth through May ninth, twenty twenty-five as Teacher Appreciation Week. And on behalf of the city of Montavista, city council, extend appreciation to all of the teachers at Marsh Elementary, Bill Metz Elementary, Montavista Middle School, Montavista High School, Byron Seering Delta Center and Kids Connection, and also to all the teachers at private and home schools. Thank you.
I declare that. Teacher Appreciation. May fifth through ninth, thank you. Anika Velasquez. Alright, Public Works Week, eighteenth through the twenty-fourth. Mr. Vance.
Is this your mom?
So, lots to celebrate.
Alright, so I'm up here to proclaim Public Works Week, so whereas National Public Works Week is May eighteenth, twenty twenty-five through May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure and facilities, emergency management and services that are vital of importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Montavista, state of Colorado and whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation parks, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders and children in the city of Montavista being knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders and public works programs in their respective communities and whereas the year twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth annual public, National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, be it now resolved that you Dale Becker, Mayor, do hereby designate the week of eighteen, May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five as the National Public Works Week. You urge all citizens to join with representatives of the net, of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. Signed, Dr.
So I declare. Public Work Week, Public Works Week, eighteenth, May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth. And a lot, lot celebrating. Okay, we will move on to citizen comments, special presentation, citizen comments. Uh, city council, welcome your unscheduled comments, please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. You said you wanted to talk. Careful what you say. And then state your name for the record.
Yes. I am Cheryl Smith and I am here representing Community Resources and Housing Development, um, Corporation in Alamosa. And I am here mainly just to inform you, Mayor Becker and Council of our June event again this year, it'll be our second annual. Um, and it is to honor and appreciate homeownership, June is homeownership, National Homeownership Month. And we not only want to honor all of our citizens in our subdivision Tierra del Sol here in Montavista, um, but all, everyone that, um, is a homeowner here in our community. Um, we have partnered this year for the first time with the Lower Foundation. Um, we will be having a Salida Circus performance, bouncy houses, space painters, food trucks, um, and all kinds of um, events for families and is all free to the community, including the food. Um, and the circus performance. Uh, we also will be opening up four of our homes that are currently under construction for anyone to tour. Um, I also will be there, um, in talking to folks who might be interested in our housing programs or needing housing to see if we can fill those gaps in those needs here in our community. So can I give you guys a flyer?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You might state the date for those in the audience.
It is June seventh, twenty twenty-five, and it is from ten to two. Um, in the Tierra del Sol subdivision.
Thank you.
Um, on Stallow, so nine forty-five Stallow Street is where we're going to center all the events. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other citizen comments? Friend, ignore me. Alright. Now, we'll go on to scheduled appearances. In order to be included in this portion of the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk by noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Certificate of Honor, Mackenzie Wolf Montgomery.
So. It's an honor to be here to uh, present this to Ms. Mackenzie. The certificate of honor is granted to a private citizen for a notable act of heroism that involves the risk of one's life with an understanding of that risk. I Sergeant Robert Pino wish to recommend Mackenzie Wolf Montgomery for this esteemed certif- uh, certificate based on a recent event. On January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at approximately uh, fifteen, twelve hours while on duty with Montavista Police Department in Montavista, Riverine County and the state of Colorado, I was alerted by dispatch to proceed to the area of First and Bronx Street concerning a small child wandering alone in the street. During my response, I was greeted by Mackenzie who kindly informed me that she had found the child and picked him up and had placed him, uh, placed her jacket around him as he appeared to be, uh, quite cold. Upon greeting the child, who responded with a playful grunt, Mackenzie noted that she had driven on the Bronx Street because she lived nearly, uh, nearby and saw the ch- uh, the child in the middle of the road. The child seemed to be in good health and in high spirits. And I, uh, and I invited him to sit in my patrol car, which he enthusiastically accepted. Mackenzie then graciously assisted by carrying the child to the passenger seat where I provided him with a marker uh, to create drawings on my whiteboard while I spoke with Mackenzie. After conducting a thorough search of the vicinity and engaging with neighbors, we were fortunate enough to locate the child's parents who were understandably concerned but demonstrated deep love uh, for their son. I would like to extend my heartfelt appreciation to Mackenzie for her exceptional concern and support in this situation. Her care and compassion played a crucial role in ensuring the well-being of the child. And without her intervention, the outcome could have been considerably different. And anything for.
I think you want to get him up here to take a picture.
Yeah.
Good job. You know, absolutely. Keep an eye out for your neighbor. Alright, we will now go into public hearings. For the sale of the city property located at two, three, three, five Sherman Avenue, Montavista, Colorado, eight, one, one, four, four for the purpose of the hotel, I will turn it over to our public hearing officer, City Attorney Gene Farish.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. We will call a public hearing at this time for the sale of, of piece of, of public property uh, which is known as Track Two uh, in the Sky High Complex. Uh, it is composed of approximately two point five four acres. It's located in the southwestern portion of Sky High Park, uh, adjacent to Sky High Trail and Sherman Avenue. The way that we will proceed and the record should reflect that the time is approximately, uh, six.
Six twenty-five.
Uh, and a quorum of the, uh, city council is present and that this matter was publicly noticed, uh, in the paper and, uh, uh, posting rather. Um, and, uh, the way that we will proceed is first of all to have the city manager who's done a lot of the work on getting to where we are on this uh, situation, uh, present the history of, um, uh, contract negotiations and, uh, what, uh, the buyer plans to do and so forth, and then we will have the, uh, city planner uh, address the procedural uh, matters that need to be addressed, uh, on going forth, and then we will take any, um, testimony under oath, since it is public hearing uh, for many of the citizens, uh, pro or con, first of all, pro for the sale of the property and then, uh, contrary to the sale of the property. And, uh, then we will go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing. And the matter will be then remanded to the city council for action on the proposed contract of personal, uh, uh, purchase and sale at the next, uh, city council meeting, uh, two weeks from now. So with that, uh, um, city manager, would you like to address?
Thank you. Mr. Farish. So I wanted to take you all back to spring of twenty twenty-three, so two years ago. And the lady that is the executive director of San Luis Valley Development Resources Group and the Council of Governments asked me what I needed for Montavista. And I said I need an anchor hotel at Sky High. Um, in order to fully utilize that for economic purposes, we need to capture those guests that are using that facility that can spend the night here in Montavista before they travel home. And so uh, Sarah Stober sent, introduced me to a gentleman named Tim Shafriek, and Tim is on, on the phone or on Zoom for any technical questions that you all might have. But Tim is a vice president of development for Brymark. And Brymark is the developer for a franchised hotel called Cobblestone. And Cobblestone has about a hundred and ninety hotels now across the country. It was a chain that was developed from a man who needed a hotel in his hometown in Wisconsin. And he was able to build a hotel that fit the size of his community, which was about thirty units. Well, then the next little town over said, well, I, I want a hotel. And so he realized he was on to something there. And so Cobblestone's reputation. And so Cobblestone's reputation is they work with local investors. They work with the local banks so that the money and the investment is truly coming from within your own community. And so we have the first step through this was we had to get a feasibility study. So the city contracted with a company called Core Distinctions Group, and their primary feasibility study business is all on hotels. And so the result of that feasibility study said that this community could support a four-story, sixty-two-room hotel. And at that point, we were we started working on the investor piece of it. While the investors are in place, they have have been working with RG Bank is the primary bank, and then they've got a couple others secondary banks to help support RG Bank. And it has been for myself, a very rewarding project to see such compassion in our our investors to say, we want this for Montevista as well. And so DJ is gonna outline the process that we've gone through to this point and the survey and all of that that you've been a part of. But at this point, do you have any questions for me? Okay, for Tim. Okay, BJ?
Sorry, DJ. See ya. So I have apparently been affected people know late. So the procedures and things that we've been going through. So this has been, as Gigi said, it's been going on since twenty twenty-three, and in actuality, it's been going on even longer than that. We had a ready grant in, I believe, twenty-two, where we did a plan for Sky High. How do we make it better? How do we do those things? And that's where we decided that we needed a hotel and some other items that we needed to make it a more positive mini. So we had public engagement there or as much as we could get. Then we moved forward to twenty twenty-three, where we did a planning and development, which addressed a lot of problems with the Sky High complex in general. We changed the zoning to something that actually fit into that zone. We changed it from residential medium density to commercial highway. And the reason for that was we had an event center sitting in a zone that was zoned for medium density, which doesn't make any kind of sense, and it's also unauthorized use. We also, you guys approved the shutdown reductions for the building that's already in place. Basically, what we did the PUD for was to adjust the boundary lines to something that actually made sense, because the current boundary lines that were in place at that time sliced the property into four different pieces. Wasn't really coherent. We had buildings that were on top of property lines. We had all kinds of just procedural issues at that point. And also, we separated off this parcel for a special sale down the road. Now we move forward a little bit further, and Gigi is doing the business side, and I was looking at the procedures. So through our due diligence, we were identified nineteen nineteen to meet that restriction that we just finally finished getting removed. There were a pool of eight ordinances that affected the property itself. There were, there is a lease, there was an intergovernmental agreement, there was a purchase or a lease purchase agreements, and all those, majority of them were carryovers when the boundary line was done and adjusted. They carried over. So when we laid the map over with what those things actually meant, most of them didn't apply. We were able to remove those. We were able to finish out the lease purchase that we had done for the building of Sky High, which we had paid off at that point, but it hadn't been closed out to the satisfaction of the title company. So we finally got that to close out with Sanos Valley Federal Bank. And then we basically made sure that we had crossed everything as far as all of the deeds that were involved. And that's taken the last few months of some pretty diligent work. So now we're at the point where we were ready to sell. We have a buyer who has we got an appraisal in September twenty twenty-three for three and a half acres of property, which is bigger than what we are actually selling. We reduced it down to two point five, I believe, two point five four. And then in this last month, Monty Mullins went in and reviewed that appraisal, and it said that the value is still good. In fact, it's probably better than good since we have shrunk the property down, and there hasn't been a whole lot of transactions of that type. So our appraised value is still sitting at or above three hundred thousand based off of our last appraisal, and which is the purchase price that this company has offered. We noticed, we mailed notices to everybody not within three hundred feet, but everybody who lived on East, who lived on Sherman, who lived on Sky High Trail, all the way, like, we went far above and beyond to try to make sure that we gave as much notice about the sale of the property as possible. In addition to that, we noticed the property itself. We put up a sign. If you drove by in the last few weeks, you would have seen it. It's been out there for about three weeks, which was not a requirement for the sale of property, but we did it anyway, because we wanted to make sure we had done a good job of noticing. We also noticed in the newspaper, and that was, again, it's above and beyond what was required for the sale of property, but we wanted to get as much notice out there as possible. The hotel is a buy right use. That's not the question that we're looking at right now. What we're looking at right now is, are we willing to sell the property? That's we have a lot of doubt. This, in my opinion, the sale, as we look at the property itself, the entire Sky High complex, our baseball field's currently in about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in re-mapping, which is why we're looking to move them at the middle school, off to the middle school for a slightly more significant cost, but for a much better, more robust product, as well as something that'll be joint use as opposed to just being maintained by the city for about six weeks of use. So it'll take that burden off of the city as far as that seven hundred fifty thousand dollar revamp of the baseball fields. As far as overall property size, what we're removing is the baseball fields exceeds the size of what is being taken for the hotel itself. So despite the way it looks, we're actually have a little bit more space. We'll have some more attractive space with the grass and the trees that we're going to retain. So that part doesn't really play an effect in there either. We worked with, I worked with Gene on an easement agreement. So one of the primary concerns that Brymark had was they need two points of access for a commercial property. So in our plat, we have a clear view extension, and their easement agreement is basically that we won't vacate that that easement and decide to pay it off until where they can't get to it. Nowhere in that easement does it say that we're going to pave the extension of Clearview. It actually says it'll be maintained as at its current state. So it'll be maintained as a dirt road, unless at some point later, the city decides to go ahead and pave that right of way. We also maintained a right of way to the east side of the property that will provide a drive space between the hotel's parking and the McMullen Building, including its extension. So we didn't cut off any sections. There's still drivability. You can still, horse trailers and stuff around. You know, we have some, some future plans that will hopefully impact that as well. But now we're at the point where once we get done with the public hearing, I will be asking you to, if you guys agree, allow me to finalize the contract and develop a closing date, finalize the easement, and pass or provide you with a resolution for the next meeting, which would be May fifteenth, to authorize the sale of the property. Any questions for me on any and all of that?
Thank you. Okay, at this point, does anyone want to testify in favor of the proposed contract? Does anyone want to testify opposed to the contract? And you solemnly swear that the testimony given in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth, sent to God.
I do.
State your name.
I'm Ken Van Eywarden. I live at two hundred Pintata View. There's a few concerns about this whole deal. Why this particular piece of property has to be sold when there's other properties located near the complex that make more sense to have that? The other problem that I see is I don't see a master plan, including this, with all the streets, where they're gonna move all those? When is this all gonna happen? There's grants involved in all of this. When are you gonna get those grants? So what are we gonna do in the meantime? I think it would have been much better to build the hotel on the east side of the complex, on the Clark property. I know that very well, because my wife lived there for years. And that belongs to the Sky High Stampede. I don't know whether the city's got any attachment to it or not, but there's approximately eleven acres there, which it wouldn't disrupt anything as far as the carnival is concerned. The only thing that it would disrupt would be the parking area over there on the north. Then in addition to that, it looks to me like it would be beneficial to purchase the Pleasant property, which is just to the east of the Clark property. And then you'd have enough space there. It would be more convenient for the people to go from the hotel into the complex, because those are, most of your activity is gonna be on that end anyway. And so the rest of, if you build it over on the other end, the only time it's really gonna be used, in my opinion, is when you have the Ag Conference and the Crane Festival, and maybe there's one other. So I, I guess my own opinion is I would have liked to seen a master plan of all the things that DJ described, because I've been in this business for a long time, and so I know how all that comes. And so I think you deserve to know exactly what is in the plan for this whole complex, because what you're going to do is disrupt the carnival for their use, and the carnival does own that one transformer that is there. They paid to have that put in. So I don't know how that's gonna work out now for the carnival. So I just think that it's, it's not a very good location. I think it would have been, I don't know, after discussing all this with DJ, and apparently the Sky High or the Stampede Committee was not willing to trade land or do any negotiating on all of that. I don't know who owns what and so forth, because I think there was other properties that were considered also. So that's my, strictly my opinion. I think it's a poor choice. I think, like I said before, the Clark property would have been much better, because you got plenty of work. I think there's eleven acres over there to work with, and it's on the main drag. I know there's a sewer there. There's a manhole right there in the one driveway. So I am opposed to that particular sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Ken. Any other persons opposed? If not, we will go ahead and close the evidentiary portion of public hearing.
Mister Attorney, is it, or Mister Farish, is it a proper for me to ask Mister Van Eywarden a question?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So Ken, you said that there were grants involved with this.
For DJ, it was. I discussed all this with DJ, so maybe I've misunderstood.
Grant for the baseball fields on.
Okay.
The granting process to finish.
Okay, so how is, I guess, how is all that gonna work for moving the baseball fields and all the construction going on? So where is the parking lot going to be moved to where you're putting the hotel? So if it's gonna be moved over to the north, then there's going to have to be a much better access getting from that parking lot past those grandstands to get over to the main entrance to the Sky High complex.
So one of the, one of the reasons that that location was selected is for the least amount of disruption to the neighborhood. And so you can easily walk across the parking lot into the Sky High facility. If you, to take what you had suggested, it would have cost more money to purchase the prop, the, whoever you called the name, but the Sky High Stampede property, and there is eleven acres there, and then purchase the Pleasant House to the east and tear all that down, it would have just, it would have just added.
So you've got a budget on all that?
Yes. No, no, we never did get a budget.
So how do you know?
Well, first of all, first of all, you have to buy two residents, and you're displacing.
Well, Stampede owns the one, the Clark Castle, right?
Yes.
Okay.
They do, but they still have somebody renting it and living in it. And then you, and then you're making an assumption that the people next door to it want to sell
Sure.
to the east, and then you're putting a four-story building right next to another house. And so it would have, to the house that would be to the east of the Pleasant House. And so that, that I'm sure we would have had this whole room full of people that didn't like this idea. And where the hotel will be located now, it'll be easily accessible from, from Sky High Trail to be able to pull in, and it'll be easily visualized from the highway. And these investors are not putting twelve million dollars into a hotel that's only gonna be used three weeks out of the year. And the feasibility study sent out, well, we had like a hundred, a hundred and eight people respond back to it, and we sent it to the bankers saying, how many, how many days a year do you have auditors coming in? We sent it to the funeral homes to say, how many out-of-town funerals, you know, do you have? We, we sent it on such a broad brush of industries to say, can the community support this? And it came back, yes. And if it hadn't come back, yes, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
So the, they're saying the occupancy rate is going to be somewhere around six, what, sixty to seventy percent? Because I think that's what the valley is.
And, yeah. And so what Montevista needs to do, we are capturing what we are currently losing.
Well, I agree with that, that you need, that you need more hotels. I'm just disputing the location, because now we got an intersection that is terrible right now. So that's gonna have to be fixed, right?
And we just got a grant.
One sixty.
And we just got a grant to fix that intersection.
When's that gonna happen?
Well, it was just awarded, and so Rob hasn't even sat down to talk through it, but it's a
That's why I, my opinion again is, I think that's where a master plan from you guys would have really helped. I think it would have helped the council, so they know exactly what's going on. It would have convinced me.
So we have the current master plan
Documented.
that is out of date, and so we will be looking at grant funding for potentially a master plan for next year. But you know, in, in the master plans back to two thousand and six, it talks about a hotel, and it talks about then the next phase of what we're already under construction planning on, and that will be to add some RV spaces back there and a shower building.
Where's that gonna be?
It will be to the east of Public Works on the far north part of the property. And so the, and council's been aware of all of this as we've worked through it. The school is highly motivated and excited to have to work with us for the baseball fields. They'll be out at the middle school. We'll have more space. It'll bring, help Durbin be able to recruit more baseball tournaments, which will then help fill not only the new hotel, but the other facilities that we have in town. And in the long run, this is gonna be a real win.
So that's why I was insisted on, you know, if you'd had a master plan to show them where the traffic is gonna come from, and right now you're short of ADA parking particularly, because I know very well, because my wife needs it, and it's very difficult when you gotta go clear to the west end, and all the only AD parking is over here. So when you do, so when you do parking over on the other side, then there's areas of it that are gonna have to be asphalt. So I just, I just see all those little things. My wife keeps telling me I overthink everything, but that was my job, so. Anyway.
Thank you. Sit down. No.
I don't work for you now, Gigi. She was a good boss. No, no criticism there. But anyway, that was, those are all the things that I think about it, and when I had to present things to the board of county commissioners and to Gigi, I had a plan. It was a written plan, a doc, because I did CAD all the time. I had a plan. It was a written plan, a doc, because I did CAD all the time anyway, so I did it all, all the planning, where everything's going to go, when it's going to happen and all of that. So I guess maybe that's my fault. But anyway, enough said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. So if there's no other, um, testimony, I would advise the city that there are basically two requirements, um, in the sale of city property under section two, eight, fifty of the Monovista Municipal Code, and that is an appraisal by a qualified real estate appraiser uh, to be obtained prior to the sale and transfer of any city real estate. Um, and that, uh, the real estate would not, uh, no sale of real estate will be completed at less than its appraised value. Um, and the appraised value here, uh, is, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. That is the amount stated in the contract. So that requirement has been fulfilled. The other requirement is a public hearing. That's why we're here today. And that, uh, with that hearing, that requirement, uh, is also fulfilled. And, um, so, uh, and I will mention also is, I think DJ mentioned, the, uh, letter from, uh, Monty Mullins, who's a real estate appraiser, uh, has been brought up to date, uh, as a cautionary matter. As requested, this letter is to convey the conclusion that the above referenced site value is developed for you in September of twenty twenty-three would still be salient. In other words, valid. I have, uh, reviewed and analyzed the market data as well as possible changes in market conditions between now and when the above referenced site was appraised in September of twenty twenty-three and based upon the twenty twenty-three appraisal and the recent review and analysis of market evidence and market conditions, it is my opinion that the subject site value has developed for you in September of twenty twenty-three would still be salient, signed by Monty Mullins as MAI and SRA certified uh, appraiser. So those two requirements have been fulfilled. With that, uh, we will conclude the public hearing. Thank you for your participation. This matter is, um, remanded now to the Monovista City Council uh, for further action. And as I said, uh, they will be considering the, um, the, uh, resolution for sale of the property. Contract has, um, something like eighteen requirements that have to be satisfied, uh, prior to closing. So the date, uh, assuming that the, the council approves it, uh, going forward with the contract, uh, that date will be, uh, selected and, uh, those requirements will, uh, have to be met to satisfaction of the, um, the buyer, uh, mainly, and, uh, some of them, uh, city. So with that, we will conclude the public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. DJ.
So be, before DJ talks, and if, I don't want to be, make sure I follow protocol, but, um, Tim would like to make a couple comments. Uh, he's the developer, if if he can make a statement.
We'll, we'll reopen the hearing. I, I didn't realize he was there on the line. Uh, but, uh, this is the buyer of the property and, uh, Shifik, is that his right pronunciation, I think? Uh, would you like to go forward, sir?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you all inviting me into your meeting here, uh, to be able to participate. Um, a few different things. Uh, my last name, Chef Chick. Not a big deal. But, uh, I just wanted to start with, uh, saying that there was a lot of time spent on planning, uh, for the hotel. And the site selection, uh, was a very big part of it. But prior to that, I know the city uh, invested a great deal of money in a very comprehensive study looking at the event center, uh, the Sky High Center, and what it really needed uh, to support its business and its success over time. Uh, very pointedly, uh, mentioning the hotel, the need for the hotel. Gigi and I sat down early evaluating the information that was provided to support that, um, hotel, suggesting the hotel. And really felt that there was more, uh, more in-depth study that was needed specifically for the hotel. And, uh, everything and being able to put the project together with local investors. Uh, and so the city then did engage in a second study specific to, uh, the hotel and how, um, it would, what, to measure the community and how many rooms the community would, uh, support and successfully support. And they have, they were, so it's an independent third-party company. And they had determined the size of the hotel. Uh, not so much the location, other than the proximity to the event center, uh, was important uh, in supporting that. And then, you know, both of the businesses supporting back and forth. Uh, the location, uh, that we worked on, we, we considered and very early looked at sites on the opposite side of Sherman. Um, is that, uh, if I get my directions right on the south side of Sherman? Is that correct? Okay. And one of the concerns that I had with that is when there's events going on at the Sky High Center, the traffic and, and the pedestrian traffic back and forth from the event center, the Sky High to the hotel would create, uh, some real safety concerns because there, there'd be a lot of pedestrian traffic in a high vehicle traffic time. And that was something that was concerning to me. What, what I would, would have liked to have seen is more of a creating almost like what I would refer to as a walking campus. The two businesses support each other when there's big events going on that people can walk from the event center back to the hotel, uh, and back and forth safely. And keeping them close together, so we're not adding traffic uh, to the overall community by people going back and forth from the hotel to, uh, the Sky High Event Center. One of the things that we did talk about very early on regarding this site was displacement of, uh, the carnival, because that's where the carnival, my understanding, takes place and, and a lot of parking. Uh, then, then when it was discussed to move the baseball fields, uh, obviously net result of moving the baseball fields, still with selling the piece for the hotel was a net increase in usable square footage on that site. However, it's to be used, whether it be placing the carnival there or parking, uh, that's, that's out, outside of what I had to work with. But the net result was we were creating more usable si- space on that campus for the, um, event center. When we looked at the site specifically and the building placement, it was really important for me to uh, have visi- visibility and accessibility, uh, be very key from the highway. And not crossing the, all the hotel traffic, uh, where it was discussed possibly moving it fur- the hotel further to the east um, on the opposite side of the, uh, Sky High. Uh, that would force all that traffic again back and forth across the event center further down, down the street. Um, so when we looked at placing the building, one of the things that we did is we positioned the building on the corner where we did so that the building itself would actually help shield all the activity in the parking lot for not necessarily just the hotel, but even the event center itself to shield that traffic, the lights and the noise from the residents further to the west uh, in the apartment buildings. So that was of consideration there as well. Um, we know that the studies said that the hotel was probably about the best business in supporting the event center and vice versa. When, when we look at, uh, placing, uh, let me see, I'm just trying to look at my notes here real quick. I apologize. If, if the hotel were placed further to the east, that, that would not affect the traffic at the intersection of, of, um, of one sixty in Sherman. It, it, whether, whether the hotel's where it's planned right now, or if it was further to the east, that would not change the traffic issues that are there at that intersection, which will be issued in the very near future as a result of, uh, receiving that grant. And I guess those are, uh, one, one final comment of clarification. The per, the, the land will actually not be purchased by Brymark Builders or Cobblestone Hotels. It will be purchased by the business entity that was formed with all local investors. And so they will actually be the ones purchasing it. They will be the ones that will own that hotel. And so it is, uh, locally owned property. Those are really the, the only comments that I had. Again, thank you very much.
Well, and thank you, Tim. And to kind of add to the whole baseball field discussion, we work extensively and I think worked well with the Stampede Committee. So they knew what was going on and we walked the property, I think at least four times. And the one, they have since walked it with the carnival contractor. And he's actually pretty excited about having the carnival moved interior. Because it will kind of help protect for security and safety-wise. Like some of the unfortunate events where people are plowing through things. And so, um, so they're okay with it. And some of the baseball fencing that's up right now will, will stay up at least for this year, so that they've kind of have somewhat corralled their park visitors. And, um, so we haven't received any negativity from that.
So where's that parking going to be? I can't visualize that. The parking that you're losing where the hotel is, where is it going to be now in relationship to the carnival?
So that will just be kind of scattered around. It'll be an interesting s- stampede.
Because if you're going to have to have a good access from that parking lot to get, go from the north where those bleachers are, you gotta get through there somehow with all the traffic, the foot traffic. And there's a lot of horses and a lot of activity.
Trailers and, sure.
To get them back over there. And then that means they gotta come all the way around to the west side to get in through the main doors of the event center.
Mm-hmm.
That was my main concerns with, with that particular.
And the Stampede Committee is working on that. And you know, if you're in Denver, you don't care if you walk four or five or ten blocks to an
This is in Denver.
And this is in Denver. But if you're in Denver, you would do that, or even for some of the parking at the Colorado State Fair. And so, you know, people may be inconvenienced a little bit for the fun that they're going to have once they get inside.
Okay.
So, um,
Do you need to close out the public hearing again?
Well, yeah, we, we did. Are you going to
give any more test? I'm just preparing for the motion if they're deciding to. One or the other.
I'm done talking.
Okay. Yeah, we will, we will go ahead. Since we reopened it for, uh, comments by Tim, we will now go ahead and close it, uh, and again, remand it to the city council for action.
So, uh, what I'd be looking for is, uh, if you guys want to move forward the sale, uh, motion on the decision to pursue the sale of the property and have the city staff finalize the plans, set the closing date, prepare contract easements and resolutions required for the sale of the parcel, providing to the council for, to May fifteenth, council meeting.
You want a resolution? You just want to guess?
I'm so moved.
Just give a guess for now. We'll do the resolution on the fifteenth. I wanted to make sure that I had enough time to make sure all the documents were right. Um, they've been reviewed by all parties by the, the title company on everything to be in a single package that there's no errors prior to handing you the package. Because I don't want to have to make changes to be right the first time.
So move forward.
Moved in second into, we have to vote this here.
Now they could just give you a nod and say, go forward, because the, the real, the real vote is going to be on the resolution and the contract.
Okay.
We'll all go.
So.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you, DJ. Okay, Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash zero nine, Resolution updating the Monovista fee schedule. You gonna read them all?
No, 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 I'm not reading all of them. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to hit the highlights of what we all met. Staff, we met with Gigi, and we went over all of the fine, um, fees that we have currently, and we've updated some of them. Um, so on page one, we moved the bad check fee to the finance section. Um, we changed the video games and arcades um, business license fee from fifty dollars to twenty-five dollars. Don't know why it was ever fifty dollars to begin with. So we moved that to twenty-five dollars. Um, we added a solar permit fee for thirty dollars. We are adding a liquor license processing fee for a hundred dollars. Um, we have a lot of liquor licenses that come in that want to do transfers and or upgrades for them, for their LLCs. Um, so that takes a little bit of time to do that. So we added a license processing fee. Um, on page four, uh, background checks, we changed to twenty-five dollars. We research and fee is now thirty dollars. Um, copy of video recording, um, not including body cam is thirty dollars per hour. Uh, tapes, DVDs, CDs per, um, and thumb drives are ten dollars plus twenty dollars per hour, one hour minimum. And then on recreation, we changed the basketball for adults to sixty-five dollars. We added a concealed carry class for seventy-five uh, women's self-defense class for fifty dollars. And then we moved up the team fees um, for adult sports. So there's no team fees for youth sports, just adult sports. And then all pre-K and K are thirty-five dollars for all sports. First through second is forty-five dollars for all sports. And then we added a cheerleading for, uh, recreation for forty-five dollars, plus they have to pay for their uniforms. Um, so Sky High purchased a new stage, so we have the old stage. So Recreation now has the old stage, um, and then we're going to be able to rent that. It is a large, heavy stage, and it takes a lot of time and manpower to put it together. So we put that on the fee schedule for three hundred and fifty dollars, which includes setup and teardown. Um, we also included an electrical hookup fee for the parks, and that's twenty-five dollars. And then for the sewer service, so this one kind of got a little confusing, so some of the stuff got moved around. Um, we added sewer connection fee, city excavation alley only. Sewer's connection fee, owner excavation alley only. And then sewer connection and asphalt is at cost. Is that right, Russ? Just make sure I read that correctly. Um, and then unmet customers per resident unit is going up for the sewer service from thirty-five, seventy to forty-six. For in-city limits and out-of-city limits is ninety, from seventy-one, forty to ninety-two. Um, and then Um, and then sewer per thousand gallons after the first five thousand gallons. That how that reads? And then we are going to be adding a service fee charge. So thirty-five dollars in city cert- for in-city. Um, eighty dollars for out-of-city service. And this is for after hours. So on a Friday, it's eighty dollars. But if it's on a Saturday or Sunday, which is considered a weekend, it'll be a hundred dollars. And then we changed utilities to water service. And water service fees, we're adding those as well. The water service um related calls will be thirty-five dollars plus labor for in-city. Out-of-city will be eighty dollars on Friday and a hundred dollars on Saturday or Sunday. And then on a broken meter due to freezing, it'll be the actual cost plus labor. And then we added a utilities section. Let me, let me go back, sorry. Um, unmetered customers for water service um will go from thirty-two eighty to forty-three and from sixty-five sixty to eighty-six. And then we added a utility section for storm drain. And then for that one. And then for Sky High, the only thing that was added for Sky High was a false fire alarm for two hundred and fifty dollars.
On the, on that for Sky High, if we had a cup, well, twice in one night. You know, there's no smoking, there's no vaping in that facility and the the fire protection is extremely sensitive. So for one event, fire department showed up twice and they were quite unhappy. So, so we made that fee pretty, it's pretty high, two hundred and fifty bucks with the understanding that we will split that then with the fire department. And so for them having to come out, cause so now at least in the restrooms, if they all have big signs on the mirrors saying, no smoking, no vaping. And we're writing it into their contract so that the, you know, they know that they'll be responsible for their guests if they go in there to go smoke or vape.
So I just asked that council approve the resolution for the updating of the fee schedule for twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, resolution updating the modest fee schedule.
Been moved in second. With resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, resolution updating the modest fee schedule. Is there any discussion? Sarah?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Rimes?
Yeah.
Counselor Watson?
Hi.
Mayor Becker?
Hi.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, resolution updating the modest fee schedule for twenty twenty-five.
We will move on to staff proposals, reports and actions. City Clerk.
Um, good evening again. So I don't have a whole lot for you this evening. Um, just a couple of things I wanna do.
Apologize for that.
I just heard that the CML District Eight meeting is on May twentieth in San Luis. Um, if you all wanna go, I do need to know tonight, or no later than Monday. Um, I am going on vacation. I will be out of the office from the seventh through the sixteenth. Um, so the deadline for signing up is the thirteenth. So I would like to know, you all would like to go before I leave, so I can get everybody registered and get a check prepared for that before I leave, so. Take her?
Um, I think yes, but yeah.
Um, would generally, you like to take generally?
Well, we can confirm that.
Um, and then the other two things I'd like to update you on is, we did get um notification from the Colorado Department of Revenue. We have two businesses in town that have been served with um notification and fines that they have, um retailers have served underage um individuals with tobacco. Um, we do have a tobacco regulation and policy within the city. Um, and it's very strict tobacco policy um to try to prevent this tobacco to minors. Um, there are some communities that are also even moving forward with not allowing um flavored bathing within the convenience stores. We have not gone to that. But we have two stores, uh Park Avenue Liquor and um Top Value have both been cited for selling tobacco to a minor. Um, so they both have agreed to pay the fines to the state. So at this time, they will not be coming in front of the Liquor Authority Board. Unless they do it again. If it's caught again, then they will have to come in front of the Liquor Authority Board and present to you all why they should hold their liquor license or their tobacco license. The last thing I have for you is, thanks to Gigi, she um, I've been pressing her for about a year now to let me get a program called Text My Gov. Um, she let Judy and I go through all the meetings with the company. Um, and she said yes, finally. So um I got all the department heads on board with it. It's a program that will integrate with Rob's new program, iWorks. And it will be interactive with the community. So they'll be able to text us questions. Um, it'll be questions that we as the city will already have in place through our website. So if they text a question like, how do I pay my bill? There'll be a link on the question that'll take them right to the bill pay. Um, how do I report a pothole? It'll take them directly to Rob's iWorks and it'll allow them to create um a work order for Public Works. It will also allow us, if the police department or Public Works has a major water leak or they have a major scene going on, it's an interactive map where we can highlight a certain area on the map. And everybody who has said that they would prefer to get a text message, as long as they're within that area, we can highlight that area on the map and we can shoot them a text message saying, hey, there's a major water leak in your area. Please be prepared. The water will be off from eight to five. Or hey, there's a major police presence in your area. Please avoid this area at this time. Um, or we can send a mass email to or text message to everybody in the city saying, hey, don't forget Cinco de Mayo Celebration is May third. Um, so we have that ability with this program to do that as well. We also will have the ability to send out surveys through this program. So we can send out surveys like for the hotel. You know, what do you wanna see? Where do you wanna see it? Um, we can send out different surveys for all kinds of different things, including in-house. So it's a pretty interactive program for our community, so. Once it's up and running, I'll bring it out here for you guys to see.
That's good. Thank, thank you, Nina.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Um, no written reports, man. I'm being super short. Thank you. Uh, I didn't have a, really a whole lot of things, so um biggest thing, just to kind of let everybody know, we're still gearing up for summer. Um, that's been our main focus with switching over, trying to make the park screen and stuff like that. Um, project wise, we're in the middle of getting things going. Um, getting all the contracts signed, getting the documents in. Um, we're under contract fully on our EOC project with the backup generator that's fully under contract. We've got all the bid documents. All the contract documents back, the performance bond, everything's back. So we're fully executed on that one. Same thing for sewer cleaning, fully executed there. Um, MOF or that, we're working forward on that one. Um, probably we'll have all the documents ready, including temporary easements and everything else back um by August. So we're looking for a fall bid schedule. So we'll do that. Um, the alley project is fully executed as well. Um, so just moving forward. Um, like Nina said, I'll be on vacation from the seventh through the sixteenth. Um, and really just kind of open it up, Council, if you guys have anything from your constituents that is, you've got questions, happy to answer.
Where do we stand on the waste treatment?
So we are moving forward with waste treatment. We are newest um cost estimate came in at about forty-three million. Um, we are secured funding for thirty million. And that's what the, the rates reflect currently is that debt service payment. Um, so we're roughly twelve million dollars shy. So we've applied for a grant. We're waiting on that grant. But in the meantime, we're moving forward with design to try to finalize that design. Um, get that ready to go. Um, and then we're gonna wind up, hopefully if we get that grant, we'll pull the trigger and, and do it. In the meantime, we've reevaluated our project and working with USDA and the state of Colorado um to try to minimize some of the expenses. Some of the things we're looking at is pulling out the collection stuff. Um, we were planning on doing those items, those improvements like the manholes and stuff under one big contract. Um, since we've already planned for that debt service, we can do it on smaller scales on an annual basis. Though we've got state approval at this point, they have to sign the new consent order to approve all that. But verbally, they've approved it, letting us pull that out. That'll save us some money in that area, bring the cost back down. And then we've also got the state approval to not, not do, but postpone the decommissioning of both Henderson and veterans. So we can pull those funds and try to get it back down to that thirty million. One, I think Council would echo my feelings and I feel the same way. We don't wanna burden our citizens anymore than what we've already have.
Right. So all those fees that were, when was that started? Three years ago?
Yes.
So those fees were based on the thirty million, right?
Correct.
So now it's gonna be up to what'd you say, forty or forty?
Forty-three.
Forty-three million. So then are you going to for the next, cause that was supposed to be estimated to be five years. So we got two years left. So with the next two years, then are you gonna readjust those?
I'm hoping not. I'm hoping we can readjust our project backwards to get it within what we've already got budgeted and go forward. And or the grant we have, if we get the grant, then we can go ahead and move forward.
So the grant will
Offset.
Will offset everything.
Yes. Yes. So the idea, I'm hoping not to burden the citizens any further than what we already have.
Rob, wasn't it a three-year fee increase?
Yes.
Not five?
It's, it's three years.
Right. And Ken, Ken said five years. It was just.
It's a five-year.
It's, it's a five-year project when it's initiated. That's what it takes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
The engineering.
Yeah. And we're still, and we're still trying. So the actual construction period is two years.
Right.
Yes. So that's still there.
Right.
So and, and we're hoping to have plans and everything done. We are at ninety percent plans right now. So it's just a matter of bringing in the subs and finalizing a few details. Um, so we're, we're there. We're not that far off.
Who's the design contract?
Uh, Element Engineering. And they're just sold.
Did they do?
They did, they did the projects in Del Mar. They've done most stuff here.
I do who they are.
Yeah. They work with, in the same, and they got a pretty good presence.
Yeah.
They did Center's wastewater plant, but it's a couple of years, you don't know, so.
So, okay. Any other questions? Awesome. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
PD. Senator Chief Taylor.
Um, so here's our monthly activity summary. Um, we had six hundred and twenty-nine calls for service, seven traffic accidents, ninety-seven reports taken, twenty-nine arrests, forty-one citations issued, seventy-five traffic stops and seventy-four agency assist calls. One of the bigger incidents we had this month, um with the help of our detectives, our officers, um Alamosa detectives and deputies from the Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office. Um, we served a search warrant in the three hundred block of Madison Street, um where we detained seventeen individuals found on the property. Um, we see stolen firearms, drug paraphernalia, narcotics, uh US currency and other items that were reported stolen from other counties. Um, so there was also a couple of individuals arrested with outstanding warrants that were at the address. Um, and another person that's now has additional charges related to uh drug distribution. Um, so we wanna, we will continue um to focus our efforts on related properties and individuals in the modest. Um, the only, the other thing I have um was the Easter egg hunt. We teamed up with the Elks. Hosted uh Easter egg hunt. Um, and despite the snow and inclement weather, the, the high school was nice enough to let us use their facility and it, it was a huge success. There was a lot of a lot of people attended, um, a lot of prizes given out.
Cool.
Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. But I wanna tell you that was an awesome thing that you guys did. So congratulations on that.
We're definitely gonna continue.
That sort of, I have great faith in you guys. Thank you. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
IT. Get it, guy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good drinking, as per usual, so that we can get out of here and get home and enjoy our weekends. I know last month, I was talking about having some uh phone issues with our server. That all has been fixed. I was able to also fix some of the issues we're having with phones themselves. Our sergeants now have working desk phones, as that was something that was coming along with these server issues. Uh, at Sky High, we have a hearing aid system out there for ADA compliance. We did some testing on that and uh it works thoroughly and Stephanie's quite happy with it. We've had the technology for a little while, just has not been broadcast that it's there, but it is functional. And I believe it was used recently in this last month. And to no complaints of anyone in the community. We were having some issues with our scanned email. That's all been fixed. Google pushed an update that pretty much eliminated all the secure apps. They want everything to be brought to a more secure version of doing things, so that way everything's just a little bit more tight-knit. We in IT sent out a warning email to keep an eye out for phishing attempts using Canva. There's been a couple going around. I know we've had a couple employees fall victim to that. And uh we've been able to catch some of them before they were detrimental. Other ones, not so much. And so we had to go back through and try and rectify any issues that stemmed from that. But uh the ones that we have run into recently over the past week, we've been able to catch them before they run rampant and sent out spam to other individuals or other counties or really any other agency. And then I've been working with Rob to get the Hope Works cell phones all upgraded. They haven't had an upgrade in about four years, I want to say, on their cell phones. So I've been working with Rob to get them all upgraded and a little bit more modern. And then uh with the power issues we've been having here in the valley, we've had a rack UPS die, which was one of our main units back there that powers the city network. We got a new one in and it's been replaced fully. The old one just absolutely just died. Wasn't responding, wouldn't even act as a power unit anymore. So we are working on getting that just recycled out now. And speaking of recycling, I have spoken with Gigi on trying to get recycling figured out here for the. on trying to get recycling figured out here for the city. So anything that's tech-related, e-waste, feel free just to bring it by, we wanna try and help out, just there's some space around the city. So. Other than that, I have nothing else and wanted to open up for questions.
Questions?
Thank you, council.
Thank you, appreciate you, man. City manager. Look, she's got her little piece of paper, guys.
That's not much on it today.
It's gonna be like a dope package, just glue on the back of it.
Um, it, everything's still a little topsy-turvy with the federal funding. Um, the latest thing to impact the city would be the Maricor program. And we, we have one individual that reports to Miles or his name is Miles, he reports to DJ on the destination blueprint tourism stuff that we've got going. That position is actually contracted through La Puente. And they have funding to continue through May or through June. And then if they can't secure additional funding, or if the city can't pick up the difference, then you will have to go home. The bigger impact is on Anika, she has four AmeriCorps people to help her with kids connection. That that contract is actually through Serve Colorado. They will continue to pay until they run out of resources, which is also likely June. So if the city would have to take that on, it's twelve hundred dollars a person. So it's really pretty minimal, um these kids aren't aren't working for the pay, they're working for scholarship forgiveness. And so we've reached out to a couple other sources to see if they would continue, just defending one of the contracts, which which would end in August is sometime anyway, so it's not a whole lot of of time left on their their contracts. Uh, I wanna thank the employees that helped jump in, we did a an employee trash pickup back in our celebration of Earth Day. And I don't know if Rob knows how much we got, but we kind of scattered around town and and some of us took going along the um Larriette ditch. And so Rob has a new piece of or a different piece of equipment that we're gonna be able to try and knock some of those weeds down and just make things look more palatable. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you, GD.
Yep.
Council committee, city commission, council reports. Council Watson? Just got free.
A little bit.
Council Howard?
Glad to be here.
Council Rimes? Don't know what I'm doing after the twenty-fourth this month, but other than that, pretty.
What is that?
We've got, we've got uh weeks going up to the twenty-fourth, celebrating different employees after that, I don't know what we're celebrating. Must be Gigi, Gigi, it's twenty-fourth through thirty-first.
National City Manager.
We can declare that one down. We can do that.
I was trying to figure out who we left out and it it only left out um Sky High employee and our main administration staff, so. Be pretty much.
We gotta amend it to that.
Yeah, there you go.
We've got a really fine employee team, they they work hard.
Well, with that, we will recess the meeting until May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at six PM here in council chambers. Meeting.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks, Cam.